The Expo, it's a little bit different in that there are more anglers. They fish for more days. Their Expo is not quite as large, so it has a little bit different economic impact, but certainly very strong as well. It's projected to be between eighteen and twenty million dollars for the four days that it will be here in Shreveport, Bossier. One of the great things about fishing events like this is these fishermen not only come for the tournament, they pre-fish in the area. So they come to our area multiple times, spend the night in hotels, eat at our restaurants, go to our attractions, bring their families with them, and they have a great time in our community while they're here. Even better, this does include national television on NBC and NBC Sports. So we feel like the coverage will be even a little bit greater than what we received through the Bassmaster Classic. So we're excited about hosting this. Some of y'all may want to see the swamp people. If you want to see something really special, come out that Saturday morning to the launch, and they will be doing a special competition for you there. Or if you're more of an afternoon person, they'll be at the Expos in the afternoons on Saturday and Sunday. There's also a concert from Dylan Scott, a country western singer, on the Sunday, the final day of the weigh-ins. If you'll look on the back page, there is our projected budget, the income and expenses. As you can see, the largest expenditure is actually the bid fee for the event. This is not quite as large as the Bassmaster Classic, and some of that is by us providing some of those things for them. One of those being a very large banquet on Wednesday night at the Horseshoe Casino. They were very generous in coming on as a sponsor. One of the things they said is, "This event, the Bassmaster Classic, did great things for us. Fishermen are obviously gamers as well, so we would love to help host them here in our community." So they stepped forward with a very sizable sponsorship for the event and have been great partners. So we're looking this time, as you can see, to spread out the cost of the event between more organizations. The Red River Waterway Commission is a sizable sponsor and have been really great to work with in bringing in events already, so we're excited about that. Are there any questions that you have for me? And Kelly can give you some more details on the fishermen and the events.
Okay. And I'm not sure the question is really for you, it may be for Dale. But have we, have we already agreed to this funding from the city of Shreveport at this stage?
Prior to going to bid for the event, we did, I did have conversations with both Mayor Glover, Mayor Walker, and both parishes as well, to make sure that we could have some funding stability to, before we even bid on the event. So there was a conversation prior to.
Okay. And when was that?
That was back in, was that been July of last year? July or August of last year.
And then when did we find out that we had got it?
It wasn't until later in, well, actually, it was, it was August.
Okay.
Yes.
So is this not currently budgeted?
No, sir. The agreement, if you recall from the budget discussions last year, anything done with the Sports Commission would be taken on an event-by-event basis. So we didn't establish a budget for it. You may note in the legislation here, it's suggested that it be taken from the remaining SKEDA funds that apparently have not been used this year and perhaps will not be used this year. But no, sir, there was no budget set aside for the events.
I mean, because it puts us in a little bit, I mean, there's obviously some significant amount of data out there that's debating where we stand in our reserves, right? So, I mean, how do we prudently decide at this point whether we think this is a good idea? I mean, what if I mounted an argument that it wasn't, that we wouldn't receive fifty thousand dollars in tax revenue as a function of this event? Then what would happen, I guess, is the question ultimately.
I think it would put, it would put us in a difficult situation, certainly put the event in a difficult situation. I think, as Stacey indicated, there have been some conversations and perhaps there was a pledge to assist the event. I know when they first met with me, you know, my response was, "Well, I have nothing in writing to base this upon." And then we went back and forth and really solidified the fact that this was an event that the city wanted to support, thought it was well worth to support. Therefore, the mayor directed that we go ahead and prepare the legislation. So that's kind of where we are today, Mr. Jenkins. And if the council decides that it's not a worthwhile investment or worthy event, then certainly we'll relay that back to the Cracks' Sports Commission and just see where it goes from there.
SKEDA is separately budgeted though, isn't it?
Yes, sir. Out of riverfront.
Yeah, it's not, it's not counted against the reserve. I mean, you know.
No, sir. It's out of riverfront.
Riverfront.
Correct. And that was one way that we thought would avoid hitting the reserve was to take it out of those monies, since those monies were budgeted for economic development activity but had not been used to this point.
And I mean, I guess, y'all are somewhat caught in the crossfire here, and I recognize that. And that's not the intent, I mean, I saw this on, maybe we had brought this up last year in June or July, I don't recollect, we may have. I mean, I just think right now it's a difficult issue, if you were going to say from a financial standpoint, is it prudent to spend fifty thousand dollars on a fishing tournament, albeit though maybe the best fishing tournament that we could ever hope to happen, have here in Shreveport? That is debatable if we could end up with a negative fund balance at the end of the year. So that's maybe only, I'm the only one that's concerned about that at this point, but it is a problem that we're a month away from an event and it gets to our legislation at that.
If I could add, this is one of the great forms of economic development in that here are about sixty to eighty thousand people that are going to be coming into our community for a long weekend. They will not use our schools, they will, you know, do very little usage of our water and sewage and streets and all of those infrastructure things, yet they will bring some tremendous economic impact to our community. So it is a great form of economic development.
And that's what we believe, Mr. Jenkins, which is why I submitted at that price. And we look at the entire budget, you see that it's not carrying the load of the event. And we just felt it was worthwhile event, therefore, we wanted to submit the legislation to you guys and hopefully you will approve it.
What balance would that leave for, I see our analyst is not here today?
We have.
It leaves four fifty in there, I believe. There's.
No, there's actually, we have two pieces of legislation on this one and one other, and I think after those, the balance will be.
About three hundred and five thousand.
Right. If you recall, a hundred thousand was taken out during the budget amendment process from the council to fund some civic appropriations, which really put us at four hundred. And these two events would take us down to around a quarter, three fifty.
Of the SKEDA.
Of the SKEDA money, that's correct.
Yeah. No further questions for me?
Okay, it sounds good.
And I wouldn't know, this is on for introduction. We wanted to get them here upfront. In event that were questions, we'd have time to respond and obviously we'll ask you in two weeks.
Sure. I mean, I just, I don't know how we can have it on final vote three weeks before the event, but that's maybe a cedrill or isn't the event the first week or second?
Yeah. And one of the things we're trying to do, Mr. Jenkins, when I met with Stacy and some of her board early this year, was to try and avoid this problem by saying, "Hey, guys, if you could, just give us a listing of those things that are coming and to the extent you can, what you may need from the city of Shreveport." Because we did not set up a budget for these activities, we know it's something that we're going to have to come back and talk to the council on every time one of these events come up. So we're trying to not put you in a position where you're, you know, the event is kind of coming and then you're being asked to support it. So we're trying to get in front of that, and it's a matter of information and communication. I don't think you'll see anything like this going forward because we're going to have a clear idea as to what activities they're planning and what level of support they may need from the city.
Mr. Sibley, I just want to make this statement to Sam and Jeff and I and y'all's administration. You know, this is, you know, this, this having a little bit more of a business forum because money's going to be tight and short from now on, so it's good that the council knows what's coming down the pike. And Oliver, you exactly, you had some good points there.
You know, and I mean, I don't want to jeopardize the success of this event, but I mean, do I say, "Well, fortunately, we don't have a SKEDA, so otherwise, we wouldn't be having this event?" I mean, ultimately, that's what we're saying right now.
Different factors dictate, you know, different.
Yeah, but I mean, in the end, you'd say here, "If we had started the SKEDA when we were supposed to."
Right, then we'd have to look someplace else.
We wouldn't have, we wouldn't have the hundred thousand of civic appropriations. We wouldn't have, I can't remember what, another fifty thousand went to, and then we wouldn't have this event. Or we'd be going out of the reserve, which we're debating about how much is in the reserve to begin. So, but like, I mean, I'm not shooting the messenger. Y'all are here for your purpose and you're doing a great job, and Coach made some very valid points about finding a funding mechanism, both to make it clear to you all in the front end what you're committing to and not being reliant on us to, if we're in a budget crunch to, you know, weed out the event, you know, a month prior. So I appreciate that.
And in understanding of the sponsorship, we have put y'all on the boat, the cups, website, and other advertising as well, so you are getting promoted as a sponsor.
It's not that we don't get much tax revenue from that promotion, but it's very kind of y'all to do that. It doesn't do much for our actual bottom line, but that's good.
Thank you.
Okay. Any more questions, observations, or comments? If not?
I've just got a question. You're saying if we, I mean, I'm trying to see if I'm understanding you, Oliver. You're saying that this fifty thousand dollars could jeopardize the reserve? Is that what I'm understanding?
Okay.
Or it could have, or?
Anything we spend money on at this point ultimately has an effect on our reserve. Remember the difference between a budget and receipts and expenditures, there's a big difference. And so you start with your budget, and then as you go over the course of the year, you receive money, in our case, most of it comes from tax revenue and other fees. And then we expend money based on things that we've programmed for, contracts we've made. So you get to a halfway point, and you see, hey, have I taken in kind of as much as I thought I was going to take in and have I spent as much as I thought I was going to spend? So I'm just pointing out that we didn't have this budgeted, so that means this is an additional expense that we didn't necessarily forecast, but we've had some other expenses that we did forecast that have not occurred in terms of expenses. So, yes, I mean, everything's in question in terms of what you're paying and receiving. I'm not going to lie to you, I don't think in a, you know, two hundred and million-dollar budget, fifty thousand is going to tip us over the scales. But when we're talking about how much our reserve is, and that's an issue we've debated on, on both for streets and bond issues, and a lot of fifty thousand does make an impact at the kind of levels that we're talking about, what's our reserve? So that's kind of.
There is no operating reserve in the riverfront fund.
And there's some suggestion that, and, and the. There is no balance. There is.
Of course, again, the issue here is an event that, that we, as a city administration, would like to support. We believe that the funding from the SKEDA line is the least negatively impactful place to get it. As Mr. Jenkins pointed out, the fifty thousand compared to the overall size of the budget, we felt would not skew us too much one way or another. Therefore, we wanted to bring it forward and ask you guys to please support the legislation for this event.
Well, certainly, if Bossier was participating, I'd like to participate too.
They are participating. Bossier City, Bossier Parish, Caddo Parish.
Right.
As well.
Thank you, Stacy. Thank you, Kelly.
And we did bring, if y'all would like to see it, the Forestwood Cup that will be given out. It weighs about seventy pounds, so you can do a little weightlifting.
All right. Thank you.
Can you lift that?
Sure. But, you know, just to make Kelly look at, I'd let him do it.
You think you could do it? Have you tried? It's a, it weighs about as much as you. It's a, it's a big trophy.
Do you have a card, one of your cards on you?
Yes, I do.
Would you let me have one, please?
And Mr. Sibley, if we may, again, we also have Mr. Bowles here, and this is regarding Resolution 123. If you'd like to go ahead and.
Please.
I wouldn't know, for members of the council, Mr. Bowles kind of came last minute today. He's scheduled to be in Monroe tomorrow, so we would ask if any of you would please try and cover all your questions and things today, so we can let him basically attend to business in Monroe tomorrow.
Please. And I, you know, I think this would be good for him, because I wouldn't want him kind of rubbing the folks in Monroe the wrong way, because it's close to home for him.
Exactly.
Folks close to home can always kind of get at you.
Exactly. Bill, if you would, perhaps start by outlining what this legislation does, what, where it is and the steps in the process, and that may be a good start point for it.
Good afternoon. On the, we're talking about the resolution, I actually have two, we have DEQ.
Right, the 123, the second sale.
On the resolution, what's being asked for your approval is a resolution for us to move ahead with this, what may be the last complete tranche of the bonds, last part of the overall bond issue that was approved by the citizens here a couple of years ago. If you recall, we went out and we issued a good portion of those two years ago, and the plan was to do them about a third each and split them up and move forward and get the projects built, moved, moved on through the system. As it turned out, we just weren't able to get to that second issue last year. And so what we're looking at now is potentially going on and doing all of the bonds now. So that's, that would be if we issued them all, it would be a total of ninety-three-point-five million dollars. These are the, it was approved by the, in the election of 2011. And so what we're asking you to consider here today is moving forward with a competitive sale, just like we did the last time. We'd advertise it, we'd have bids, and then we would come to you all in the last meeting in August, August 27th. We'd open the bids and we'd ask for you to, to give them your consideration. And then you would approve that, and then we're proposing closing about 17th or 19th, I forget what the date is, right? And with the bonds would actually be dated, the date of date would be September 15th. So that's what we're asking you for approval, is go out, advertise a competitive sale of these bonds. And depending on the market and where it is, we would, we would look at issuing potentially all of them. If something happened, we might not want to issue all of them, but right now, what we're looking at is moving forward with the complete balance of the hundred and seventy-five million dollar voter-approved general obligation bond issuance.
It was ninety-three million, you said?
Excuse me?
You said ninety-three million?
Ninety-three-point-five million.
And that's August 27th, perhaps, and you're going to start to advertise?
That would be the closing.
A closing?
Right. This legislation would start the process. If y'all approve this legislation tomorrow, it will start the process.
It'd be advertised according to law, and then we'd advertise it in the Bond Buyer, which is a national publication. We'd advertise it here as required by law. And then the way we do it, I'd come back to you all before August 27th to introduce an ordinance, just like we did the last time. And then you would actually, we'd hold it over, we'd come in, we'd open the bids, we'd come in and make a recommendation to you of which be it to take.
I really think we're doing the right thing. And we've had some questions going back and forth about, and Oliver raised a question a while ago about reserves. What kind of impact at this particular point? Because our reserves might not be at what maybe a couple of council members wanted to be in. And because there are a few council members who feel like we need to move on right now because if we don't, while money's, is kind of cheap, well, you know, it's really never cheap, but it seems like the feds might be raising the rates coming, coming soon.
Right. Mr. Chairman, there's, that's a good, good point. The rates have been at historical lows.
That's true.
All-time lows.
That's true.
We, since we issued the last rates, the, two years ago, rates went down even further, and they've been down there. But just recently, they started moving upwards.
That's true.
And so there's a lot of people rushing to lock rates.
Right.
At this point. So I don't see how we could benefit by any lower rates, considering where they are. In fact, and there's, you know, you can get some different opinions about it going up and going down, but I, I believe you can get excellent rates and the taxpayers will benefit by going on and getting, getting these issued at, you know, what, even, even with the rates moving now, they're lower than they've been for, in prior years. Should be one of the lowest rates you've ever gotten.
So this is, this is really a good time to.
I believe so.
Okay. Any more questions? Yes.
I got a couple. In terms of advertising, what does the advertising cost come in? I mean, roughly. I mean, my real question is if we advertise, because it's a one-reader, and we kind of over our due diligence process see some issues going forward, what are we out if we've done that? Both in terms of reputation and in terms of pure cost to us?
First question, reputation on people, people advertise, they pull back. It's just a market situation. You see that all the time. As far as just the pure cost, it's, it's one of the more expensive costs that you do advertising in the official journal. And it's, it'll be, it'll be, I think, well, B might have to help me here, but something like this, like twelve hundred, fifteen hundred dollars to advertise a complete. But just a notice won't be that much, but it's, it's, you know, I mean, compared to where you are, if it's, if we don't think it's good to pull the trigger, that's, it's going to be a lot cheaper to not do that.
I mean, that's, that gives me some kind of order of magnitude, and you're right. Though it is a significant amount of money relative to ninety-three million, it's, okay. Next is competitive sale. I'm not a bond expert, but I do look at this. And lately, with all these big bond, I guess we'll say variable rates just in the last three weeks to a month, and they have moved a lot. You're, of the ones that have actually gone through on the sale, more than eighty-five percent have been negotiated. Now, I'm assuming that's because people are worried about how much it could fluctuate on game day, and so they'd rather lock in and negotiate a sale at some potentially, maybe a little bit slightly higher price than the lowest of the low, but maybe not as high as it could be. Are we, because we're only advertising for a competitive sale, aren't we kind of at this point, since we're only advertising, can we not, for our language here, either say competitive or negotiated sale? Are we convinced the only way to do this is with a competitive sale?
You know, the only way you could answer that probably, and I've been through this exercise so many times, and, and you can do it, I mean, it's, it's, the advantage if you did it negotiated is that you could look at the rates over a period of time and do that, you know, sort of time the market, maybe sell apart, you know, that, and when you go in on that competitive, you're sort of locked into that date for a couple of weeks out. And, but when you look at the costs that you have with a, with a syndicate, you'd have, I think you'd want to have at least three bankers involved in selling this and the costs involved in that. It's, it really turns out to be about the same. I mean, sometimes I've seen it better with competitive and sometimes I think, but you really never know because you can't ever time it just exactly right. So GOs had to be bid competitively by law up until about three years ago. And then when we were first doing this, that was a question that was posed, and nobody, I don't think anybody had done a negotiated GO when we did the first bonds, as you went to, went with us to New York when you were chairman. And, and so, you know, that's a question that we kick around and look at it. So, I mean, a lot of people are still doing competitive bids.
Does the, I think the real, does the language, this specific language, exclude a negotiated?
It does not.
I think that's.
This is strictly competitive.
So in section three, that's kind of what I'm asking, because I will say that with the, the one thing about, good about a negotiated sale, when the market's really moving all over the place, you can pretty much narrow down where you're going to end up. Now, if you're on a pretty steady state, I think you're going to end up better off in a competitive sale. But all that being equal, the way this language reads is sale of bonds, bond council is hereby authorized to make preparation for such compatible, competitive sale.
Is strictly competitive, to answer your question. This doesn't, this is not negotiated or competitive.
So what I'm saying is, can we change the language to read "for such competitive or negotiated sale"? Because I'm not really sure that today on a one-reader, we're really willing to commit at this, or I don't think it's prudent for us to commit today, having seen this for about 24 hours, frankly.
I think we can have an amendment ready by tomorrow, just included language, because I frankly think it's a good idea to allow for either option.
I mean, just at this point, I'm not saying, let's not lock in a competitive.
Right.
Tomorrow, if we don't have to.
We can get an amendment prepared for that.
As long as that's legit, okay?
Yes, sir.
And the other thing is, on that seven percent parameter, obviously, we're a tax-exempt bond, and I think we got into this last time, we're not really committed to a seven percent. And so we could, if we ended up in a competitive sale and got a seven percent, we could say, "Thanks, but no thanks."
You can reject that if you're in competitive. And the seven percent and nine percent, you see that both in there, nine taxable and seven tax exempt was what the parameters we got at the bond commission, not knowing where we might be a few years down the road, if rates had really moved and we still needed to do it. But I think we're safe to say we'll be, we should be significantly under that, even with the movement in rates lately.
And I, what you're saying, I guess, the argument is it's not going to have much impact by having those two figures, because I'd rather that figure said five percent. But, but that's just, me, if you assure me that it has no impact, then that, that would not be an ordinance change that I would request. If there's any doubt, though, I would rather it say five percent than seven.
It'll have no impact.
Okay.
Because I know that's the bond commission parameters, and they have to be competitive, either, you know, either selling it negotiated or on a competitive basis.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
We were just discussing the fact that I think if we did do that amendment to add negotiated sales, the existing title wouldn't cover that, so the council staff would need to take the, I guess, Mr. Bowles would prepare a new ordinance that included the negotiated sales in the title, and that would have to be added to the agenda tomorrow as a, as a different resolution.
You think you could have that ready?
We can do it.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Thanks, Bill.
Okay. And, Mr. Sibley, if Oliver likes the five percent, I'll get on the phone and call a few of my friends, see if we can make that happen. Okay. Any more questions?
No, thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Bill.
Guess you're free to stay in Monroe tomorrow.
Yeah.
I promise you, I'd much prefer to be here.
Thanks a bunch. Appreciate it. Oh, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. Before we lose Mr. Bowles, there is one other ordinance that has financial implications, and that's, is on introduction number 77. This is regarding a five million dollar revenue bond with Warden Sewer. And while we have him, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is the introduction of the orders to issue the bonds, and I was told if I didn't get this done by Ms. Feversen soon, I was going to be in big trouble. So we've been working on this with Barbara's help for a while, trying to get this done. The good news in the course of doing this is that we have, we've gone from a, you know, not to exceed 3.95 percent rate to a point nine-five percent rate on this five million dollars. So that's a big win for the city to get this kind of inexpensive money at less than one percent. This five million dollars, you'll introduce the ordinance, and then I think Barbara just about has it, she has it spent, she informed me just as soon as we can get through the process with DEQ. But they have a lot of regulations and red tape that you have to jump through, but when you get there, you get the worthwhile rate is better than we could do out on the market. So this is introduction to issue the five million dollars. It'll come back to you for a second reading, for final approval, and for sewer improvements.
And this is, this is the one that's, it's consistent with what we voted on a few weeks ago to approve, pursuing this. I mean, I remember.
Yes.
Correct. This one has been working a while.
Yes, sir.
And obviously, there's no more out there available, right?
That's, you know, they kind of.
We'll take all we can. Eight point nine five. I'm looking at some other things, and the more on this is better than the.
They kind of came to us with this one, if I recall, saying they had, we were a good borrower, I guess, and did good things with it, so if they have more to offer, we'll, sure Barbara will pay.
It's certainly going to be higher than whatever rate we get on revenue bonds for the rest of the consent decree. Okay.
All right. Any more?
That's it. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you all very much.
And, Mr. Chairman, I think that's all, all we have from the administration at this time. time.
Okay. Let's move to the council. Jeff, you have any distinguished guests?
I'm, I think everyone here is distinguished, so we'll let them all be distinguished and keep on the going.
Looks like I've heard it before, Dale.
That's the grammar language there. That sounds like the Grand State University practice.
We're all distinguished.
Jeff, you're getting used to already, huh? Let's see what Sam's gonna say about that. Sam?
I agree with Jeff.
Ah, okay.
Councilman Shine?
Yes?
Sounds like that grammar language, a place where everybody is somewhere.
Yeah, yeah. Might, might be able to get Jeff down there.
Graduate program. There you go.
Something. Any more, any, any distinguished guest, comments from any of the council members? If not, we'll move on to awards and recognition of distinguished guests by the mayor.
We have none, Mr. Chairman.
Have none? Okay, well, I'm taking communications of the mayor, you've given that already, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any member have any...
Just looking royal today.
Miss McCullough?
Wow. Any observation relative to property standards?
I don't understand.
I don't hear benefit from private standards. What about, is Public Works sending it up?
Yeah, Public Works.
They're on it.
Please come forward.
I've got Mike. And on the way, on the way, Dorothy, since you were up, any, Councilman McCullough, you have anything for?
Um...
You just wanted Dorothy to come up.
I actually have something for solid waste. I'm always giving Dorothy solid waste work to do.
So you got Mike, you got the right man.
Yeah, okay.
Mike is the right man, so, yeah, I gotta give Dorothy a break, because she's taking on too many responsibilities around here. But, Ms. Virginia Evans on Hursey D. Wilson, she lives at Hursey D. Wilson, but there's a problem on Gardonia, where her roots are.
Uh-huh.
She said that somebody in your office, not property standards, direct, they had a cleanup on Gardonia. Now, the address is 3024, I remember it.
Okay.
But she said 30 days ago, they were instructed to go ahead and put everything out on the street, and of course, they've moved everything out of her mother's house.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, they took stuff out of the refrigerator, and there's flies, there's blah, blah, blah.
Okay.
And even since the Fourth of July, it's even worse, because people have put even more stuff out on the side of the street. So if we can take care of Gardonia, it's only one street.
I'll, I'll follow up on it, and I'll let you know something tomorrow, but we'll get, we'll get right on it.
Okay. I spoke with Mr., what's his name?
Luther?
The superintendent?
Luther, R. Fred Williams.
Fred.
Okay.
And he explained to me that you all were like a week, a day behind, you know, Friday, whatever, but...
We're about, we're running a week to two weeks, depending on how big it is.
Definitely by Wednesday, by Wednesday, you know, you all will have us taken care of. But that situation, you know, I get constant calls, and it doesn't matter what time of day, Ms. Evans will call me. And her threat was, the only reason she hasn't been down here, Councilman Shine, is because of me.
All right.
So would you please?
Yes, yes.
Well, you have the right man there.
I'll see what I can do to take care of that.
As soon as possible, and I did talk to Fred.
You bet.
Okay. And I have 1018 Morris Drive, Mr. Bill Gallien, his phone number is 828-2049. And the recycle bins haven't been emptied, I don't know if you all handle that, because you're just whomever...
Yeah, we'll see what we can do.
...handles the recycle bins.
I'll look into it. Recycle, maybe he's putting garbage in them, and the recycle people won't pick them up. I'll check on it, let's find out.
We checked with Mr., his name is Mr. Gallien, Bill Gallien, G-A-L-L-I-E-N.
Okay.
And of course, he thanked us for prior services down through the year, so we wanna keep that up.
Okay.
But checked with him and see what's going on. He said it's been three weeks since they've been emptied.
I'll do it.
Okay. And, Councilman Shine, that's it for me.
Two others, one Sam, and then I have, I have something for you and Ms. Moore.
I have a...
Let me give you this from District A.
That's my new whip. Funny, please come up, I wanna...
Here you go, Ma. Now, you don't deal with cutting, do you? Do you deal with cutting? Yeah, you helped me out on water before, I got this right to open it up.
But I, I don't know whether we can legally do this, but if we can, you know, the house on Florence Street, you know, the new one, uh...
They've been cutting the...
Cook, we kinda, it's a lot of trash and stuff and junk in the, Mike, in their, in their backyard. Could, you know, before we turn everything over, could we get a promise, if we could get Mike them to take a dumpster out there? Because, you know, the house is so nice, I mean, it's really such a nice house. And, you know, I just hate for us to not require them to clean it up. And this, this keeps from putting Dorothy on them.
We're, we've already closed, we closed last week with them, so everything now is a responsibility of the homeowner. We can ask the contractor if he's willing to go back out there and do that for us, but it would be only if he desires to do so.
But if, what I'm, well, what I'm saying is, if maybe the contractor doesn't do it, Dorothy, would you come up one minute, please? Because Bunny, it's too nice. I mean, I went and looked myself, and, and they got some old stuff back there, and I was hoping that we could get a trailer from, from the, from the city, and let them bring it out there, and maybe have, you know, somebody to clean that property up.
Mr. Shine, if I may, ordinarily, because it's a construction project, that contractor's supposed to clean up this, clean up the site.
Well, this, this is, this is not really...
It's not construction.
Right, it's not really construction. This is, and I think, Dorothy, have you seen it?
I've looked at it.
Right.
It's just, it's just some grass mowing.
Yeah, mowing grass, and then they got some old shells of, Ms. Moore, I guess it was a carport, or whatever it is, and, and that whole kind of stuff need to be moved out.
It's, it's a small amount, that's right there by that storage building.
Yeah, it's right, it's right in there, and it's some, it's some, it's some, it's some other stuff, and...
But legally, that would be their responsibility, yeah, as, as the property owner.
Yeah, well, that's, that's, I knew it would be, but I didn't know the closing had taken place, and I was wondering if we could get it done before the closing was taking place, if not, then, you know, Dorothy, you're gonna have to...
I would have to cite them.
Yeah, you'd have to, you'd have to cite them.
I would have to cite them for it.
But Mike, I was wondering if we could get a trail out there from the city?
Sure.
I just wanted to know.
Okay, right, right, right. Dorothy and I, Bunny, I thought maybe the closing hadn't been done, but Dorothy, that would be something that you and I'll have to work on, and Mike, what we'll do, we'll cut, right, we'll call you. Right, we will, we will. Because it's really, and Bunny, again, let me, let me give you credit, and because I wanna give Dale some of it too, because I know Dale was out supervising it, you know, keeping a check on it. But it, it's, it's really a nice place, it's really, Dale, if you haven't been back out there since the last two or three weeks when you were out there, if you would go out and take a look at it, I mean, it would, it would, Bunny, it really makes, it's really a proud, I mean, it's something that we can be proud of, you know, but we just gotta clean it up, you know, that's just like having a good floor down, and it's nasty, you know, it's dirty and all, you don't get the full effects. But I think if we come in there and, and get it cleaned up, and what I'd like to do, Bunny, I'd like for you to send somebody out there to take some pictures after, after this cleanup, because this is something that, that this administration, that's, that's, I don't know whether Dale led it, or whether it was led by your office or not, but it's really something that we can be proud of, and we need to, we need to have some pictures of it.
Bunny and her department deserve all the credit.
Well, thank you, Dale.
They did an excellent job with that program.
So Bunny, it would be good, but you don't want any pictures with a whole lot of junk and stuff, you know, on the side, behind the house, you know, so once they get it done, please get somebody out there to take some pictures, and, and Dale, it might be one of those days I have my black suit on, and I could stand there and wave at the people. Thank you, thank you, Bunny. Job well done. And I believe we're down to...
Revenue collection, Mr. Chairman.
Revenue collection. Okay, Dale, that's, that's you?
Yes, sir, we'll have that report ready tomorrow.
I got Mrs. Scott down here, and I guess that's been taken care of with...
She sent that out.
Huh?
She sent it out.
Okay. Ms., Mrs. Sanders, will you have a master plan report for tomorrow?
Next meeting.
I'm a little, I'm a little hard of hearing, I've been around Oliver so much, and he talks so loud.
No, sir, it'll be the last meeting of the month.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Am I doing you good?
Feel free to use me in any way that moves the process along.
Tomorrow, we'll have a public hearing, right?
No.
They're not...
No.
That's right. Add in any legislation?
We don't have any at this time, Mr. Shine.
Okay.
Oh, I was gonna, there's an item that may come up tomorrow, I know that Shelley Regal had prepared a document that I think she was waiting on the mayor to sign off on, and I just touched base with her to see if she'd gotten through to him yet. But if so, then I'd like to add it tomorrow, and it's concerning, there is a youth program that would like to rent a facility that's in one of our parks to, to kind of expand their programs. So if that is the case, it would be a three-reader, so it would just be up for introduction tomorrow, and we'd have two more meetings to get more details about it, so...
I'm, I'm told that you have an excellent relationship with the mayor, so I know it'll be signed.
We will see. Depends on the issue, I suppose.
Jeff, they're wanting to rent, they're wanting to rent a building?
They're wanting to rent a building that the, from the city of Shreveport, that's on one of our, it's actually the building that Shreveport Regional Arts Council used to use as their warehouse, and now they're, you know, they're not using it as their warehouse anymore. So they'd like to use it, their church has particular people who are very significant, sort of like modern-day saints, and, and one of their people have, have visited that building back in the early 1900s, so it's a sort of a sacred place for them, so they're doing an expansion of one of their outreach programs there, and they'd like to rent it from us, so, so, yeah, so it would be just legislation introducing that. And like I say, we'll have, we'll have a formal presentation of it later, but just wanted to get it.
Is it a church or something, or that's what?
Yeah, it's a church doing an, basically, an after-school kind of program.
Okay.
Mr. Thompson, I don't have any requests.
Public comments.
And I'll go and check to be sure, since Jack is not here.
Okay. I don't see, I don't see any, well... Okay, Mr. Sibley, tomorrow, we will have the confirmation of...
Ms. Simpson?
Ms. Simpson, is she here now?
No, she couldn't make it today. Mr. Chairman, so I'm assuming she will be here tomorrow, we generally tell them one or the other day they need to be here.
Okay, that's for the Shreveport Housing Authority, and...
Correct.
Mr. Oliver Jenkins, I'll, I'll accept a motion from you tomorrow.
I'll, I'll be looking forward to making that motion.
Okay. And, Mr. Sam Jenkins, I'll be looking here in a second from you.
Absolutely.
I like to kind of do mine in advance.
I see.
Come up tomorrow. Mr. Sibley, we back in your hands?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, under Section 8, Consent Agenda Legislation, there's one item under Sub B, this is Resolution 104, it authorizes James T. Smalley, located 1640 Wells Island Road, to connect to the water and sewer system of the city of Shreveport. This matter was previously postponed.
Councilwoman McCullough, you have any observations you want to make on that?
Actually, I have spoken with, I've spoken with Ali Mustafa and members of the administration, and based on what's been shared with me, I don't have a problem with supporting this particular item, so I will be voting in support of this on tomorrow.
I know we'll get a motion from you in a second from Jill.
That's correct.
Okay.
So move.
All right.
Regular agenda, Mr. Chairman?
Please.
Regular agenda legislation, Sub A, Resolutions on Second Reading and Final Passage or Which Will Require Only One Reading, Number 94, authorizes the execution of a retainer agreement with Ronald Latier, attorney-at-law, ratifying any, all work previously performed. This matter was previously postponed. Number 115 is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute grant documents with the U.S. Department of Justice. Number 116 authorizes the mayor to execute a donation agreement between the city of Shreveport and Southern Trace for the private water and sewer improvements for Southern Trace, Phase 5, Section 27. Number 117 authorizes the Shreveport Police Department to accept a donation of Celebrite Universal Forensic Extraction Device, valued at $10,084 from Red Ball Oxygen Company, Incorporated. Number 118 authorizes the execution of a state/entity lighting maintenance agreement with the Department of Transportation and Development in regard to a roadway and interchange lighting system project on Segment K of the I-49 project. Number 119 declares the city of Estrava, Czech Republic, as a sister city of the city of Shreveport, authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with the city of Estrava and otherwise providing with respect thereto. Number 121 suspends the effects of certain provisions of Chapter 10 relative to alcoholic beverages and Chapter 106 relative to zoning for property located at Mall St. Vincent, 1133 St. Vincent Avenue, for the Susan G. Coleman Race for the Cure event. Number 122 declares the city's interest in certain adjudicated properties as surplus. Number 123 granting approval for the incurring of debt in issuance of not exceeding $93,500,000 of general obligation bonds, Series 2013, of the city of Shreveport, state of Louisiana, authorizing the advertisement for sale through sealed electronic bids via parody or sealed electronic paper bids, prescribing for other matters in connection therewith.
Any questions, observations that you all would have?
Oh, number 20, I don't know whether you skipped over that one or not, maybe I just wasn't listening, but if you'll refresh their two amendments, that's a resolution to adopt the Audit and Finance Committee report.
Right.
There are two amendments, if you'll refresh, you can read those.
Mr. Sam Jenkins, you have any?
There's no page, then let me refresh.
Well, I need to see what the amendments provide, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
I'll try my refresh, we got everything?
It's up to the top.
It's on the top. Yeah, there you go.
A little curvy. Councilman Shine was showing him what it do on.
Thank you for being so smart.
It's two amendments, it's two amendments? Yes.
Thank you for being so smart.
What's the Google thing that's like the, or Toria Glass? I don't know. It's like a new product.
Mr. Chairman, should I go back and read it? Because, yeah, it wasn't, I had to refresh it, it wasn't online.
I was, I was trying to give Sam an opportunity to take a look at it, and that's, uh...
I'd like to see.
I'd be happy to share with you what those amendments are about.
Let me, let me, okay.
Is that referencing the $53,000?
I'm really just seeing the minutes. That's correct.
Okay. $53,450. Yeah, I have to make the first.
These amendments would increase that amount. Or one of them would.
You said these amendments would?
At least that one.
Mr. Jenkins said he'll be happy to...
Please, please.
So, the intent of this amendment, the way that, the way this actual resolution was written, it either requests that the city attorney come up with a proposal to get the money, or to render a legal opinion of why you can't get the money, okay? Now, I said, in conversations, I asked, well, don't we already have a legal opinion? The answer is no, we've just got, we don't have a formalized opinion. So I said, well, there's two that have already, always bothered me, and that's, I believe it's number two and number three, that deal with travel and work hours. Now, for those, many of us up here have worked for the government for a long period of time, now whether that's for the city, or the state, or the, I've never had a time where I've not traveled on behalf of the city or the federal government where I didn't have where I didn't have to fill out a travel claim. I don't think... And I've never seen a contractor not have to submit a travel claim to get reimbursed for travel expenses.
Hold that point right there. Scott, would you come up?
Mr. Shine, while Mr. Scott's coming, Mr. Jenkins, we do have some legal opinions, but the legal opinions don't look at the facts and then try to apply the law to the facts. That's the piece that's...
Yeah, okay. Thank you for clearing that. I didn't want to say that we didn't get valuable counsel with regard to those. That's not what I was... I was just trying to limit the scope of what you provided.
Could you make a professional, if I'm using the right word, a professional or legal observation of what Councilman Jenkins said? About not having a travel form filled out?
I can't, Mr. Shine, but I will say this. The contract provides for... The contractor provides certain documentation with each pay request. I think it speaks in terms of cancel checks. And generally, there's a catch-all for other documentation sufficient to back up, if you will, the invoice of the travel request. And that is typical in most contracts where, you know, we will pay the consultants or contractors for work that is done.
Yeah, and in the note, it does say, per the contract, it does say you need to submit travel receipts. And so I'm not saying it's necessarily something we're going to go after, but the way the resolution is written right now, I certainly want to know why we shouldn't go after it.
Understood.
And the second part in there is number three, and I'll turn it over to legal counsel over here. I think most of the time when you have contracts, whether it's in the legal profession or you're a contractor for the federal government, I'm assuming for the city government, there's like an hourly rate or... An itemized billing type of contract if you're charging. And that, to me, is also lacking in this particular country. So that's another one that, unlike the Audit and Finance Committee, I'm not satisfied not going after that particular amount of money. So that's the reason why I've proposed these two amendments to that resolution.
And I'm sorry, I was trying to look at the two amendments on my BlackBerry, but it's not coming up. But I'll take a look at them when I get...
Yeah, and I mean, it was put in there today. When I read the thing, I have to admit, I didn't do it last week.
No, no, no. I was just saying there's a problem and trying to access it on BlackBerry with the new system.
Let me ask Mr. Sam Jenkins if he would like to come in.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'm just seeing those amendments myself for the first time. So I reserve my comments until tomorrow. Give me an opportunity to take a look at it this evening. I will ask council staff, take a look at both of those amendments and provide, myself as chairman of that committee, as well as other council members, your view on what's being suggested there. Because what's coming from us is going to basically be a recommendation to the council of a resolution to pursue certain items. And I think we narrowed down what we felt those were. I think the staff did a pretty good job of going through and reading through various issues that was raised in each one of those parts. So this is a new point. I think we need to take a look at it and certainly give Councilman Oliver Jenkins, an opportunity to talk with the council staff. Did you talk with them about those two?
I did. And I'm not, as you know, I'm not on that committee. And I wasn't there for the deliberations. And I... I mean...
Now, that's what I'm saying. Make sure that you have an opportunity to talk with them about the views that the committee came away with about the items that he's addressing. So I am asking to take a look at those. And let's just see if it changes anything from a committee standpoint. It may or may not. It's going to be up to the council along, Mr. Chairman, to determine, you know, what would be pursued and what would not.
Councilman Oliver Jenkins, as a member of this council, I think you raised some very prudent points. Because every time you're dealing with the distribution of the spending of public funds, it would be kind of wise and prudent if you kind of dotted all i's and crossed all t's. And it seems like what you might be saying is that all i's and t's might not have been dotted and crossed in the contract that was issued to this particular individual. I think you raised some prudent points. Any more observations on this? We ready to move on.
So the whole $53 was for travel?
Yeah, I think it's $84,000 for travel and $350,000 for billing.
Those are the two amendments.
Those are the two amendments that I wanted to include.
The committee had a resolution that both of us were collecting or pursuing $53,000 based upon various interpretations of the contract.
Right.
And so it appeared, from what we saw, that that would be the only issue to pursue because obviously, Grisby interpreted the contract one way. He said it was three propositions built separately for the city. The opinion that we have mass should have been built as one that made a difference of $53,000 that he was paying. And I said, I stated, "I do want to take a look at what you raised there. But I don't want to prejudge it. I want to take a look at it." And I'm asking the staff to take a look at it also, so that we can see if it changed anything as it relates to the recommendation. It would be good if we were all on one page about it. Sometimes it happens, sometimes it don't, so...
And I'm not, by the way, just so we're... I'm not... I do agree with the $53,000. I'm above and beyond that on the two other additions.
Absolutely.
So I'm just broadening...
Oliver's asking for the $84 and the, what is it?
$300 and...
$300, uh-huh.
Since we had that last meeting.
Yeah, so that's roughly about $400,000 there.
So we back to a half a million dollars almost.
It depends what the minister said.
This is...
Thank you, Oliver.
Yes.
I will say this, you know, I think we did look at the fact that we think there may have been some management oversight-type issues there of the contract on the city part two. These things have been paid. They were reviewed, went through a system, were paid. And the question becomes, you know, the feasibility of spending more tax dollars pursuing something you may or may not be able to obtain. I can't speak on that right now because I'm sort of in my mind of what we had, and I need to take a better look at what's being presented.
That sounds good. Okay.
Please, Chairman.
Please.
This is Section B, Introduction to Resolutions Not to be Adopted Prior to July 23, 2013. Number 124 authorizes the mayor to execute grant documents with the U.S. Department of Justice. Number 125 ratifies the waiver of building permit fees and the donation of building materials and supplies to up to 21 qualified low-to-moder income homeowners in the city of Shreveport. And this is in conjunction with the world changers. Number 126 is a resolution to amend Resolution Number 221 of 2012, which allocated funds to specific organizations from funds budgeted and other charges in the Riverfront Development Special Revenue Fund. This is the legislation regarding the Forest Wood Cup, $50,000, as well as approximately $25,000 for SPAR for building maintenance.
Any questions or observations on this, Mr. Thompson?
I believe 124, our notes are that that should be removed because 115, is that the same thing?
Mr. Sibley?
I'm checking here now.
Well, Mr. Sibley, that was my only question, whether or not 124 should be removed.
Okay, I think Jeff has a question for you.
Yeah, I'm sorry. My other question was regarding the resolution to move the funds from SKEETA. I believe it's... We've got $24,700 for the White House Financial and Business Center on Jewella.
That's correct.
What is that going towards?
Maintenance and utilities.
So it's general operating of it. It's not a capital improvement to the building. It's just general operating.
Just general operations.
Somewhere in our packet of these discussions on this White House in the tournament, there's some discussion of how that's become an obligation of ours. And I'm not sure I understand what we voted on in the past that we have taken on that particular building in terms of its maintenance and operation.
It's a city-on-building, a cooperative endeavor agreement between the city and the Shreveport Federal Credit Union. One of the things we're looking at, because last year, whenever this developed and we accepted it, one of the things that we realized is that we were adding costs. And part of the discussion that we're looking at now is trying to get back with the credit union to see if we can perhaps work out a different arrangement under that CEA. But it is a city-on-building, the Jewella White House that is called there on Jewella.
Okay, so contractually, we are still responsible for the maintenance of that building?
Partial. It's split between the city and the credit union.
Something similar to what I think we have with some other buildings. Don't we have something like that with Sciport or someone where we...
I think we cover almost all of the costs on Sciport. I mean, they cover certain things, but we covered the basic building maintenance. But the agreement, and I can get Shelley, or, well, Shelley's out and she can speak more directly to it. But the agreement, the costs are basically split because the credit union occupies a certain amount of space. There's a Division of Bondage Department that occupies a certain amount of space. So the agreement was to basically prorate those, cost share those costs. And we're trying to find a way to move that number even lower.
Okay, and I guess it kind of goes back to my same deal. Where was it budgeted? I mean...
It really wasn't. If you guys recall during the budget discussions last year, when this all kind of came together, it came together rather quickly, and the agreement was authorized to be signed. And at that time, we knew that we didn't have a budget for the maintenance. The idea was to deal with that within the 2013 budget year. So because of the timing on when that project came together and when we, you know, all of a sudden, we got a new building in the inventory, we simply had to pick it up. That's why you have that situation. There wasn't a budget for that, no.
Okay. Mr. Sibley, please, introduction?
These are introductions of ordinances not to be adopted prior to July 23, 2012. Number 75 amends the 2013 Air Force Enterprise Fund Budget. This is regarding the heating, air conditioning, maintenance and repair of the Express Jet Facility. Number 76 amends the 2013 Riverfront Development Fund Budget. This is SKEETA. This is the companion ordinance, the one we just talked about, for the Forest Wood Cup and the Jewella White House. Number 77 amends and supplements Resolution Number 131 of 1984, the General Bond Resolution adopted on June 12, 1984, as amended, acknowledging and approving the issuance of not exceeding $5 billion principal amount of taxable utility revenue bonds, LDEQ Sewer Project, Series 2013 of the city of Shreveport, state of Louisiana, in accordance with the terms of Resolution Number 95 of 2012, adopted on May 22, 2012, as amended by Resolution Number 17 of 2013, adopted on February 12, 2013, approving and confirming the sale of such bonds, pledging revenue of the system to secure such bonds, prescribing the form and certain terms and conditions of said bonds, and providing for other matters in connection therewith. Number 78 amends the 2013 budget for the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund. This is showing some reallocation of, I won't say excess, but funds that were remaining within the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund as a result of those savings on the loan situation. Number 79 amends the 2013 budget for the General Fund Budget. This is involving environmental affairs and moving some money around to accomplish spraying for Salvinia on Cross Lake.
How's that coming along?
The last report I got, Barbara, correct me if I'm wrong, is that the worst areas are actually areas on the north side of the lake that are more in the parish controls. But at high water, it tends to drift down into our area where it really needs to be treated, as I understand it, and again, Barbara, correct me, or Wes, where it really needs to be treated is really in the parish area. There have been some discussions with the parish, but it looks as though the bulk of it has fallen on us at the city to really deal with and try to protect our drinking water.
Wes, that's what I was concerned about. Wes, do you want...
Yeah, I think what's happened is we've had mild winters, so the problem's just gotten worse. And that's... We went into the year knowing we were cutting it real close with what we had budgeted for the year. And we're to the point now where to properly manage it, we just have to have some more money to be able to do it.
How far away are we from this situation impacting our water supply?
Well, it's not an immediate threat, I don't think, to... It's definitely not an immediate threat to water quality. I don't think it's an immediate threat to holding capacity of the lake or anything like that. I think it's just... It's more a concern that if we don't keep it in check, the long-term... Yeah, it's the lifespan of the lake could be shortened, and we just don't want it to start heading that direction.
Right, we don't need that.
Right.
I plan to be here for a little while on with Councilman McCullough. Now, I was talking to Councilman McCullough. And Wes, I wouldn't want that to happen.
No, sir.
Yes.
Well, without getting too much of a bean counter, I mean, I am shocked by the price tag of that deal. I mean, that is borderline unreasonable.
Yeah, it is. We've had years where we spent, I'd have to go back and look, but three-quarters of a million. There have been years where we spent considerably less. It's hard to budget for because you don't know each year what your situation's going to be. It depends so much on the weather, depends so much on how severe the winters are, how harsh the summers are. But our contract spraying is about $133 an acre. And, you know, it's just a perpetual thing, once you get into the warmer part of the year. It is...
Yeah, but I mean, 350... I mean, how many acres have we talked about? Hold on a second.
How much have we already spent this year? How much?
I don't know to the penny. We've probably spent close to two-thirds of the 150. And, you know, you don't really start spraying until it gets warmer. So at the rate we're going now, we would not have enough money to make it through the end of the year. And that's even with just the one boat doing the spraying. We actually need a couple of boats, if not more, out there to... I won't even say stay ahead of it. I would just say to kind of keep it at bay.
To help Mr. Jenkins with his calculations, how many acres do we spray it? How often do we spray them? How many times?
Well, we... They basically spray every day, and they try to cycle through the areas that are impacted. And I think at last check, there were about 1,500 acres that were impacted. And they need to be spraying.
And what is the parish doing to maintain their portion?
We've asked the parish for some help. We have not heard back with a definitive yes or no. We actually went before the commission in January. Because a lot of the complaints we get are from parish residents that are, you know, outside the city limits. But we have not gotten anything from the parish. Now, we have talked to the State Department of Wildlife and Fisheries, and they're actually going to come over, they say, and do some spraying. But they haven't told us how much or how long or anything like that, so...
Jeff, I would rather for the parish to help us with that more than the dog park, wouldn't you?
At the tune of $350,000...
It'd be great if they help us with a lot of things.
We need that more.
It's definitely a pressing problem. The Salvinia is a hard thing to get behind.
The best thing that we could have would be a very cold winter. And we... I guess it was three winters ago, we had a pretty cold winter. And we noticed a pretty significant difference. But the last two years, it hasn't been that way. And we need something more than just a standard winter. We need, you know, a 1983 winter. We need the Red River to freeze again.
Y'all think y'all can find a group of, you know, people who enjoy making lakes very cold for some sort of an event that want to come here and, you know, do a polar bear swim in Cross Lake? And we'll all throw an ice cube in? There you go. We'll see if we can kill it all.
Any more?
Well, I guess, how long does it take to spray one acre?
One boat covers about 15 acres a day. On a good day, maybe 20. But that's pushing it.
In the wrong business. Okay.
Maybe you can spray it from your plane.
Yeah, I was thinking about that. From the plane, I could take care of a lot of acres pretty quick. Okay. How much... Did you say you had an idea of roughly what the parish spends on that problem?
No, I don't know... The parish doesn't spend anything on Cross Lake. I don't know if they have any money budgeted for spraying in other water bodies or not, but there's no money that they contribute for Cross. But Wildlife and Fisheries is going to do some spraying. They have told us they were going to send over two boats. Don't know when, don't know for how long, but...
When I was on the commission, I know they were spending some money, I believe, on kettle lake with this same problem. And are we... I mean, I'm not 100% certain how this vegetation gets introduced into a waterway, but are there any preventive measures from people who use in the lake? I had heard once, if you, say, if you had a boat and you use it up and make misting up and it got exposed to this, and you brought your same boat and put it into Cross Lake, there's a possibility that it could...
That's exactly how it spreads. And what we tried to do, knowing it was going to be very difficult, but we put up signs and we tried to get the word out. Boat launches, clean off your boat before you launch in the lake. But it's just... It only takes a little bit to start. And it started in Cross. It started in all the area lakes 10 years ago. And it's just, it's just tough.
How much? And I guess the argument would be, we accommodate this through the way we budget for water. But of our water supply, how much of it goes to the parish?
I'm sorry, I'm not sure.
Dale may, you know, of our total water supply that we supply water to, what percentage? And maybe Barbara knows.
Just outside the city limits?
Yeah.
Go to...
It's not real, I mean, Lakeview subdivision, which is on the north side of the lake, is a wholesale water customer of the city.
No, but I mean, I might argue that their pro-rata should be burdened by this since residents of the parish are enjoying this. But the argument, the corollary is essentially what they pay in water rates should be accounting for it, right? I mean, that's...
Probably what they say.
I mean, that's the...
But Barbara, can you speak to that?
I don't know exactly what the, you know, outside city limits amount is, but it's not a large portion. I would imagine less than 5%. You know, most everybody is within the city limits. We don't have a lot of folks that pay the outside city limits.
Oh, really?
Of course, the lake is in the parish.
Does that include Pine Hill Water Works? Do you find the summer Pine Hill Water Works included in this?
Pine Hill has an emergency connection to the city, but I don't believe we supply them water on a regular basis.
Lakeview is the main...
Lakeview, and they're one of our larger water users, is Lakeview. They're one of our top 10 water users. But beyond that, it's individual, it's handling.
Yeah, and most of the complaints that we get are from parish residents who don't drink city water that are further to the west. And their complaint is that they can't get their boat in the lake because they're locked in. That's where we get most of our calls from. Obviously, that's not our...
I mean, that's not your motivation to do this, is necessarily for the people in the parish to get their lakes and boats in the lake.
No. I mean, we like for the lake to be a recreational resource, too, but it's our water supply and that's...
Okay. Thank you.
Mrs., I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
No, go on.
Mr. CIO, I would like to see, and I don't know how well it can be done, at those boat launches, that, you know, washing the boats down before they put them in the lake. I don't know if there's some kind of impact enforcement or something that could be done just to put it back on people's mind, that we're spending quite a bit of money. And we need some help from the public to make sure that they're not contaminating the lake themselves by not washing their boats down before they put them into our water supply. So, if that's something that can be looked into.
I think we can look, and say if there are more ways we can get that information out. I think the issue that y'all were just discussing long from though, you know, the real challenge of Salvinia throughout the state is we share this waterway, this water body, and to the extent that we can get other jurisdictions to assist in dealing with this issue that impacts everybody would be very, very helpful. But because on our own, it's very difficult to continue to fund at the levels that are necessary to try and keep that stuff, that stuff at bay. So, any discussion, and we're going to talk to the mayor about it, and obviously, council members, if there's any discussion that can be held with, for example, the parish to assist in dealing with what is a, you know, a situation that impacts us all, that would be helpful.
Well, if someone would look at Lake Vista, and say, you know, you don't want Cross Lake to look at, there should be some motivation.
Exactly.
But the part that they need to do, they need to do also is wash the boats down before they put them in the waterway.
Remember, we don't have the option of draining hours over the one...
This is something that I'm going to suggest to Sam, that he would be looking into.
But for the next term?
Yeah, for the next term, he might be, he might be positioned to use this way, so...
I think Mr. Shine is looking for a CIO position.
No.
I'm not sure. I'm not interested in what he's up to.
No, I think we need to do that.
Continue, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, please.
I think we're on ordinances on second reading and final passage. Number 8911 is an ordinance amending and reenacting Chapter 74 of the Code of Ordinances relative to solid waste collections. There is an amendment to this matter with previously postponed. Number 63 is an ordinance amending the 2013 Capital Improvements Budget. Number 64 is an ordinance amended the 2013 Streets Special Revenue Fund Budget. Both those matters were previously postponed, both involved in minor arterial asphalt program. Number 65, an ordinance amended the 2013 Streets Special Revenue Fund Budget, previously postponed. There is one amendment. And number 66 is an ordinance amending the 2013 General Fund, appropriating the funds authorized therein. It was previously postponed, and there is one amendment. Number 67 amends and reenacts certain provisions of Section 30-201 and 30-203 of the Code of Ordinances relative to fire prevention and protection, Article 8, limited access gates and to otherwise provide with respect there to. Number 68 closes and abandons the 20-foot wide alley between Common and Douglas Streets and between Kettle and Fennel Streets in the 10-acre Lot 2 subdivisions located in Section 37, Township 18, Range 14 West, Kettle Parish, Louisiana. Number 69 declares the city's intention to acquire full ownership of certain adjudicated properties for the Murphy Street Park Project. Number 70 amends the 2013 General Fund Budget. It has one amendment. This is regarding spar equipment repair and maintenance. Number 72 is zoning matter C5013. It's an ordinance amending Chapter 106 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Shreveport Zoning Ordinance by rezoning property located on the northwest corner of Yuri Drive and Ardmore Drive, Shreveport, Kettle Parish, Louisiana, from SPI 1EB1 Highland Urban Conservation Buffer Business Extended Use District to SPI 1EB1 Highland Urban Conservation Buffer Business Extended Use District to add a dog grooming salon. Number 73 is zoning matter C5313. It's an ordinance amending Chapter 106 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Shreveport Zoning Ordinance, for continuation of R2E SPI 2, Urban One Family Residence Extended Use District Limited to a motel only on property located on the southeast corner of Lewis Lane and California Drive, Shreveport, Kettle Parish, Louisiana. And number 74 zoning matter C3713. It's an ordinance to amend various sections of Chapter 106 of the Code of Ordinances, the City of Shreveport Zoning Ordinance.
Mr. Simpkins, I'm glad you said a dog grooming salon. I didn't want Olive to be trying to slip in a dog paw. Okay, Olive, get in.
I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
First, I'm sorry. First is, I'm going to note again for Councilman Sam Jenkins, who happens to be in District G, that ordinance number 73 should reflect Sam Jenkins, District G, if I'm not mistaken. We tried to get that clarified, and it's now gone. Before, it used to be G O Jenkins, now it's COJ. Okay. The second question I have is on amendment to number 66. That's a new amendment. It's suggesting we raise the reserves to 74, 7.4 million. Do you know how that 7.4 million number was generated? That's a question for Mr. Simpkins. I'm assuming it came from the administrator.
Yes, sir, it did. And that was based upon our analysis of where we stood right now in terms of the fund balance in order to get it up over $10 million in reserve.
Okay. So, 7.4 plus what we believe is 2.6 in there, the goal from y'all's perspective is 10 million?
At least 10, yes, sir.
Wow. And refresh my memory on what our fund balance was in 2011 when we went out for the bond, Sam?
Approximately 9 million.
Okay. Gotcha. And I guess this is really a question for Lenis. Can you go back and look in the CAFER for 2010's CAFER? And see what our fund balance showed in that?
Yes.
And then compare that to what the draft of the 2012 CAFER looks like?
Yes, I can do that.
Okay. I was led to believe that they look more at your audited financials with regard to the fund balance than necessarily where you are to...
Present.
At present, just because they feel you could, I don't want to say manipulate it, but moving funds from one piece of ordinance doesn't necessarily say that's your commitment forever. So, that's why I'm asking for that in comparison. And then, number 74, I must be confused on what 74 is about. Because I have notes that say April.
Oh, here comes. Listen, Dan Boer is coming forward.
74? We were going to bring that to B's attention. The description of 71, however mildly accurate, is somewhat misleading. So, we, in an attempt to correct that description, it looks as if we ended up with a duplicate entry for 74, which in my opinion, is an attempt to correct 71, but it wasn't done terribly well either. We've got one ordinance amendment.
Okay.
An ordinance amendment only. And you have the ordinance in its entirety.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman, and Roy brought that up. Number 71 doesn't appear on my electronic, but it's on, that's kind of what threw me on one of them.
And that's the thing.
I'm having two issues right now.
The description, the way it's written, doesn't very accurately reflect what's in the...
We don't have it, Roy. We need to either read it or...
I think 71 is the one that was removed at the last meeting, isn't it? It's the description that's poor. The case number is correct. Well, we're talking about the ordinance.
Right.
Right.
So, his reference to 71 is, okay. I thought maybe I missed it, because I have it here, but I don't have it.
I think 71 was the one that we removed at the last meeting.
About manufactured housing?
And we said we were going to come back with a new ordinance.
Okay.
And then, B gave it a new number, and I believe that number is 74.
That's 74, okay.
Right. And that's what I think is, I agree with you. And 74 should be case number C7313.
Same language, is what you're saying, Roy?
Well, yeah, the description is still not real great, but what the heck? It, the ordinances should be what is reflected in your packet is C3713.
Which one should we remove?
71 should be removed. You don't have to remove anything now.
Everyone's gone.
Right, it's gone.
It's not gone on mine, but yeah, that was what was...
Right, but we got it on there.
Okay.
You know, we got it here.
The print is...
Yeah, we got it on, okay, right.
So, 74 should read, an ordinance to amend various sections of Chapter 106 of the Code of Ordinances, the City of Shreveport Zoning Ordinance, and to otherwise provide with respect there too. It'll work.
But, I mean, but really, the issue there is something about factory-built homes, is it not?
Correct.
Well, I think that needs to be in the title, because without that...
We disagree, and we tried to get that to somebody. That's not what we wrote, but that's what got here. But what do you mean, you tried to get it to somebody? Well, I'm not the person, but I brought it to Stephen's attention at the last council meeting. He got with the people in our department, wrote a description that I looked at, and supposedly, it was forwarded on to you. And that's not what he showed me, all I can tell you. It did correct what's in 74, mentioned factory-built homes. The idea that it makes it more restrictive, not less restrictive, which is what the original description implies.
Could we get that corrected by tomorrow?
I'm confused. Wait, wait. Mr. Chairman, what's on the agenda, what's on the electronic agenda is the ordinance that we received from the MPC.
Okay.
Now, if that ordinance needs to be amended, the MPC needs to amend it and send us the correct one. It's the description, not the ordinance.
Would you all do that? Would you all amend it and get it to Mr. Thompson's office?
What do you mean by description, Roy? Are you talking about the title?
Yeah, I mean, the one sentence that characterized the purpose of the amendment.
Okay. And I'll just say, as a legal matter, we often have ordinances that say amending Chapter 106 without being more specific in that.
And the fact sheet includes an accurate description.
That's legally acceptable, but as a policy matter, you may want it to say more than that.
Typically, we duplicate that sentence from the fact sheet.
Okay.
But we tried to get this down there a little quicker. This was a fairly large ordinance.
Well, what's on the agenda should be the title.
Right.
Right.
Okay. Well, maybe I've created something here, not intentionally. I see here some April minutes, and it's obviously a new format, because they all look like they blend together on my, looks like it's a continual stream of links, and it's really three separate links. April minutes, May minutes, draft, June minutes. And then, we have an ordinance document, which has the entire ordinance in there with the fact sheet in front of it. So, at the most recent, it's come up how many times in front of the MPC this issue?
Well, the MPC, as you may or may not be aware, typically will not even put it on the agenda till we show a draft copy to the members, so that they will understand fairly accurately what is being proposed. And so, it was on there for no other purpose than to review the draft, make sure that's what they wanted to do, and then they then scheduled it for a public hearing where the public could receive those drafts and come and comment on it. In this particular case, we also started with a resolution that may or may not be in your links. I'm not aware whether they are or they aren't. But we did that even before an amendment was drafted, so that I got some fairly specific directions about what they wanted me to do.
Okay.
Because it's fairly open-ended topic.
Could you, for those of us that haven't, so, the initial issue was whether factory-built homes should be allowed without going before the MPC?
That is correct. They were, in the current ordinance, they were a use-by-right.
Under which zoning?
In all residential zoning districts, so long as it was something that the lay public might refer to as a double-wide. You could put a double-wide in virtually, it was the same as a stick-built home, according to our existing ordinance. People didn't like that.
Okay.
Now, and that was the general instruction I was given. We don't like that. So, I put in a resolution as a preference to all of this. You know, here's what I think you're telling me to do. I set it out in writing, they passed that resolution. Once they did, I crafted an ordinance, they looked at it and said, yeah, let's put this on a public hearing. And that is our typical routine.
Okay.
We don't even put it on, till somebody crafts an ordinance, we don't put it on the agenda.
Okay. You get the ordinance, and then you, it comes before the MPC as an ordinance, and you have six people that stand up in support of this change.
Correct.
And then, you have eight people that's stood in opposition.
Well, they certainly, they express reservations, is the way I would characterize it.
Okay. I'm just going off the data that I have in front of me.
Right.
Okay. So, I mean...
It was the manufactured home industry, yeah.
Okay. At this point, is there an appeal? Has there been any type of appeal by these?
No, sir. No. The MPC, I assume that the MPC approved these changes. Correct. Right. So, once the MPC approves the changes, they have to come to the council, because the council has to enact an ordinance. Amendment. To effectuate what they...
With these changes.
Somebody could issue a...
So, there really wouldn't be an appeal to a change in ordinance, I guess, is what it is.
It would not be an appeal. They just have to submit it to the council for the council to either vote for it or against it.
Because it's not, I mean, it's just the ordinance itself, it's not...
Those who might be characterized in opposition would have had the opportunity to appeal, it wouldn't have had any substantial effect, other than voicing their opposition.
And so, we've already had a, you had the public hearing...
Correct.
At your place, so we don't need a public hearing at the council?
Not legally, I don't believe, but I defer to do it on that.
Ostensibly, somebody could show up tomorrow and want to speak on against this.
Or against it.
Or against this, okay. I'm sorry, appreciate your patience with me, but it's not very clear.
No, Mr. Chairman, let me point out something. We have a new e-agenda, electronic agenda, and it's because the city has a new webpage. And we're doing things, we've had over one week to change the way we used to do things, and we're doing something different now.
Now, if you look at number seventy-four, the one that we're talking about, if you see, see documents under that, if you click on that, that's the actual ordinance.
I understand.
Above that, she has the April minutes, the May minutes, and the draft June minutes, which are three different documents. But it is a little different. You may have to look a little further to find what you're looking for, but once we get everything going, I think it'll be easy to follow.
I'm, I'm sorry that I brought us down this hole, because I'm just saying it was not very clear to me what, what we were actually doing.
But, but it gives us a chance to kinda talk about it, so. So, the actual document that you would be voting on would be the ordinance that you see that's adjacent to the word documents in blue.
Understand. I mean, it's so, I mean, it's fairly simpleton, but to me, that's, I don't know what it is, twelve-page document that I, it's not readily apparent to me what is specific. And I'm sure there's a way I can tell where the changes are.
Oh, yeah, no, no, I'm not, I'm not getting, yeah.
Should be in your packet, a separate sheet that we, what we prepared for the planning commission is a separate copy that also should be in your packet. It includes strikeouts and, and the new verbiage that, that does make it a little clearer. I don't know if you got it, but I can provide it. We don't provide those in real simple ordinances, but we do when they're complex like this.
Would you provide one for Councilman Oliver Jenkins, please?
We'll hand a copy to B as a walkpastor.
Please, and B, would you make sure that it's put in her hands for Councilman Oliver Jenkins?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, someone. Mr. Chairman, that was the legislative.
Okay, Mr. Thompson, I believe we, uh, yes.
One thing that I wanted to bring to the council's attention is that ordinance number seventy, with amendment number one, it makes it a companion to the Riverfront Budget Ordinance that's on first reading. So, I don't know whether you want to adopt this tomorrow, when the companion is on first reading.
Order number one, you said?
Amendment number one makes ordinance number seventy a companion to the Riverfront Budget Ordinance that's on first reading.
Number one twenty-six?
Number.
Seventy-six.
Seventy, okay.
On introduction of ordinance number seventy-six includes the money for the Jolla White House, that's the one you're talking about, correct?
That's correct.
They are companion.
He's suggesting.
Amendment number one, this amendment would transfer, uh, first seventy-four thousand seven hundred from the Riverfront Development Fund, uh, increase the, uh, transfer of the general government contracted services by fifty thousand dollars. It has the money in there for the Forestville Wood Cup Fishing Tournament and all of that.
Amendment number one of, of number seventy.
Ordinance number seven. So, I'm just saying, you may wanna look at those to see whether or not you wanna adopt one before the other catches up.
Okay, why don't we just, if you want to, Mr. Thompson, we'll kinda make that as a little homework. And, uh, at this point, we'll move on. Any, uh, any legislation that's been tabled that we need to take off the table?
I'm not aware of any, Mr. Chairman.
Anybody else, any, uh, other council member might have any table legislation that you'd like to take off for tomorrow? If not, uh, property standards appeals. Mr. Dorothy, who are in your hands, and I know they are capable hands to be in. Councilwoman McCullough has let me know from time to time that she feels like that you have capable hands.
Good afternoon, Mr. Shine, um, Councilman. We have one case this afternoon, and it's in Mr. Sam Jenkins' area, thirty-six thirty-four Sumner Street. The owner is not here today. He is an over-the-road truck driver. He has contacted me, and, um, we inspected the property. He has placed, um, new exterior wood around the entire structure. He's placed new windows and roof, new shingles. The structure still has a few more things, but, um, he has promised me that if we give him another sixty days, he'll be able to have it all completed, and I have no objections since he has made significant, um, strides in, in rehabbing the structure.
What was your pleasure? So, I'm just gonna ask you, what was your pleasure?
So moved for sixty days, Mr. Johnson.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilman Sam Jenkins, seconded by the chair, to extend another sixty days to this applicant.
And I have no others.
Making it easy for us this time, huh?
Yes.
Hand vote, uh, B.
I'm sorry, uh, no, sir, you can vote electronically, my apologies.
Okay. I know we got quite a few old-school people here who used to vote with their hands. Okay? Okay, that's, uh, one, two, three, four.
My mind is a check line.
Five, okay. Four, and two are to change.
Chairman, I believe we all have reports from offices, boards, and committees.
Well, I, I was, I was looking toward Jeff, uh, Jeff has a.
We do, we have, uh, from the Infrastructure Committee, uh, made recommendations, uh, to the full council to amend the item that is on the table right now regarding the water and sewage rate increases. We'll have those, um, formal recommendations to share tomorrow, and, um, that action can be taken up at the following, uh, meeting. So, that amendment, uh, all that needs to be done is it needs to be removed from the table, and that amendment, if it's voted on and the, the will of the council, that's what we would accept, and then it can be voted on at that point. So, um, so tomorrow, we'll make the recommendation if, uh, the council, what's that?
Do we have an amendment?
No, we don't have an amendment yet. Do we need to write that amendment? I mean, we don't, we're not able to add the amendment until we take it off the table, are we?
I mean, we can do it at the same time, but we need the amendment, that's the important thing.
Right.
Okay, okay. Well, let's, let's double-check, and we'll get that to you tomorrow to make sure we have it in, in there in time.
Could I ask, uh, Mr. Thompson, for them to try to get it to you by eleven o'clock tomorrow? No, later than eleven. I know how you all work, and I know how the wheels are.
Mr. Shannon, I, I assume the administration is gonna write the amendment.
Yeah, they'll take care of it.
But can you, you know, and I don't wanna put you all in any.
We can have it told.
Yeah, I don't want.
Where is it on the agenda?
I don't want the council staff to be getting out any erroneous information, uh, getting anything wrong, so.
You know we're subject to do that, Mr. Shine, so we have to have a good.
That's why I'm saying it, cause I heard that.
That's what I'm saying, it's not on our table. Where is it on the table legislation?
Uh, number seventy, wait a minute.
Number four?
Four. Ordinance number fifteen of twenty thirteen. Amending and reenacting certain sections of Chapter ninety-four of the code.
Okay, it's just, it's listed.
It's all in that whole.
Number four on the table, yeah.
It's reading ordinance fifteen of twenty thirteen.
Jeff, I'll.
Twenty twelve.
Twenty twelve, right.
I'll, I'll be looking to get a motion from you, uh, tomorrow to bring it off the table.
Well, would we do that tomorrow, or would we do that at the following meeting? Because if we take it off the table, then don't we have to vote on it?
Not necessarily.
We could take it off the table and then postpone it to the following meeting.
Sure.
Okay, but, all right, now, you've got my, piece my curiosity here. Four, oh, amendment number one is the thing about the three thousand gallon, the, uh, the ordinance itself is. Got it. I'm not gonna drive us down another question, so I'm just, but is there, it, it, just for my clarification, is there a reason that we would need to remove it from the table
tomorrow and not at the following? Is there an advantage to one way or the other?
No, the only, the only thing that we need, what's needed is the amendment. And if you wanna remove it from the table, put the amendment on it, and then put it back on the, you know, in, either way you wanna do it.
It's postponed.
It won't do us any good to do anything until we actually have the amendment on.
Yeah, okay.
But I might argue that the rationale of move it from the table to up in the ordinance section.
So that people realize.
People knows that we're gonna actually plan on doing something about it. So, I'm, whether we postpone it in a different section, I'm all for that, just to make clear our intentions.
As long as it's a move forward. And y'all have our formal language from our recommendation correct, so you don't, you're not waiting on anything from us? Okay. So, as long as we have that on there, we'll make that exit tomorrow.
Chairman, tomorrow, I will remind the council that you may wanna remove number four and put it from the table.
Please.
Perfect.
And, and the, and the amendment will be.
Still your tender for your clerk's report.
Well, I have a clerk's report, Mr.
Mr. Thompson?
A good one today, huh?
Mr. Thompson, the amendment will be ready tomorrow, too, to attach to this piece of legislation, and, and Jeff, you're gonna move postponing that?
Well, we're gonna, yeah, we're gonna take it off the table and then postpone it for the, to the following meeting.
Well, I thought we was gonna take it off the table, uh, attach the amendment to it, and then postpone.
Correct.
Yes.
Yeah, correct.
I wanted to make sure that Mr. Thompson and I was on the same, uh, what is, Mr. Thompson, sheet of music? Oh, no, Oliver has a, uh, uh.
We have the same.
Banjo player.
We have the same playbook, Mr. Shannon.
Yeah, oh, same playbook. Well, now, we would use that, he, he used that for me and the mayor, the same playbook, you know, cause you're talking football, and that right there, you're talking football. When you're talking music, you wanna say, when you're talking to banjo players, like, uh, the, the Jenkins Brothers here, you wanna use the sheet of music.
Let me just say that, without taking any offense, Mr. Shine intending any offense, I, I much prefer to be on Mr. Thompson's playbook than you're in the mayor's playbook, whatever playbook that is that we're referring to.
Well, Dale, did you hear that?
I know, sir, I was. Something.
Sorry, I stopped listening when it wasn't important.
Oliver, Oliver, I should record it.
And I'm just saying, they're playing on some playbook over here.
No, it's recorded, no, it's recorded. I'm gonna be playing that back tomorrow. Okay, um, Mr. Thompson, uh.
Could I ask one more question?
Okay.
Um, the only other question, Dale, was about the, um, the introduction, uh, don't we need to authorize the signature on the consent decree? The two of you?
No, because it's not ready, because we're still in.
Correct, we're still waiting on some information from DOJ, uh, and the idea is to have the final document before we put that legislation on, so we're trying to get the final document.
Okay, we have no ABO appeals, uh, zoning appeals, uh, Mr. Sibley, none.
Okay, here we are, we, we at the front part now, reports from offices, boards, and committees.
I did mine earlier. I had a report, but it changed.
Okay, and, and Jeff, I think you've done yours already.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
We had a line in.
Mr. Thompson, uh, Oliver, you want Mr. Thompson to give a committee report?
Said he spent all four days of his weekend preparing it, so.
See when he has the show. Live from Vegas. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Uh, I have received communications and enter-office memorandum from the Metropolitan Planning Commission.
Wow.
Dated July the eighth, twenty thirteen, through Mr. Windsor Andrews and from Mr. Charles Kirkland, concerning Resolution one oh six of twenty thirteen. That's the resolution by Mr. Sam Jenkins, concerning the future land use maps. And in essence, the MPC says they will be happy to do what you requested, and Ms. Sanders will be working with that and will be working with the council. That's a, that's a great report. So moved to accept the clerk's report.
Wow, 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 Art, you are on the ball.
Let's see you smile.
We have nothing else? Uh, if it's all right with the council, I'll, meetings adjourned.
You conducted a great meeting.
Very good meeting.